Ladies and gentlemen, this is 3:00 PM, July 6th, the year 2020, for the Carson City Planning Commission's Workshop. Would you call the roll, please?
Chair Rogers.
Present.
Flash chair doors.
Present.
Commissioner Eswin. Commissioner Preston. Commissioner Perry.
Present.
Commissioner Tingles, Tingle. Sorry. I'm sorry. Commissioner Wiggins. Of course, present.
All right, thank you. The public is invited this time to comment on and discuss any topic that is relevant to or within the authority of the Planning Commission, including any matter that's not specifically included on the agenda as an action item. Since this is a workshop, we don't have any items that are action items. But is there anyone in the audience who wants to make a comment at this time?
I see no public comment, Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry, say again, please.
I see no public comment.
Thank you.
Dazie, I can't project, so is there anything you can do from your end?
Mr. Chair, the Planning Commission received the following email. Dear Planning Commission, please consider lifting your seating limitations for outdoor restaurant seating. The restaurants are really struggling with limited indoor seating. If you would temporarily lift your restriction on shade structures and outdoor tables, it would enable the restaurants to offset the loss. Please also consider reserving one parking space for takeout order pickups. Downtown is especially difficult to pick up takeout orders. We need to support our small businesses. We need to support our small businesses survive, probably to survive. Thank you, Joe Kilpatrick. And I'm happy to call Ms. Kilpatrick in the morning and talk more about this.
Okay, thank you. Since there's no other public comment modification of the agenda, there's only one item on the agenda, so are we going to modify it? I don't think so. All right. Workshop item D1. Discussion regarding possible amendments to CCMC Chapters 18.03 Definitions and 18.04 Use Districts. Mr. Plummel.
Okay, thank you. Before we get into this, I just want to go through a little bit of background, maybe to help anybody that's watching as well. We have gone through these sections. Today, we're going to be discussing 1803, which is definitions, and 1804, use districts or zoning districts. We've had one internal workshop in the past to kind of go over some comments, and this is our first time through really looking at changes with the plan being to, for the Planning Commission to go through these chapters, eventually take it to the Board of Supervisors for more public comment on these chapters before bringing it back to the Planning Commission and Board for recommendation and action. As you can see from the packet, this is quite a meaty section. We're still in a phase here where we don't have the public present at meetings. You know, and we do want public review of these, of the title 18 chapters, and these in particular, I think, are very important ones for the businesses and uses, so. And I wanted to say that today, I don't plan on dispensing with the definitions 1803 and 04 today. This is going to take another meeting to get to. In fact, you know, I think we've incorporated some of your comments from prior workshops in here, some of our comments, but staff's still doing an internal review. So like the definitions, we've gone through once and incorporated Planning Commission comments and some others, but we're still doing a staff internal review and still finding more conflicting types of uses. As I mentioned in the staff report, we have this whole tourist commercial thing to resolve, whether it has its own uses but are similar to those, and we need to reconcile those and come back with some solid recommendations regarding that. There's recreational uses that we haven't tried to clean up yet. So here's what I would like to cover today. Make some changes, take comments. We want to keep this out for public review online over the next month and come back and take up whatever we don't finish today in these sections in one more workshop before moving on to the next one. Again, I think when you talk about all the uses that are permitted and all the definitions that go along with it, there's a lot to talk about. I think we have plenty to talk about for a couple hours today and we'll still have more for another meeting. So kind of the things I wanted to cover today. Tomorrow, are you still trying to figure out how to get my presentation up there? Okay. I'm going to put the agenda up here pretty soon. But basically, primarily, I think, if you look at, so, and first of all, apologies for the rescheduled meeting. I just remembered you're all here on short notice. We rescheduled it, so thank you for rescheduling and being flexible for that. So what I did was, we just, you have the staff report, and there was late material for that that's now just incorporated at the back of this, so the packet's the same as it would have been last week. And so that's what we're going to use to discuss it. And I think primarily the discussion for today, I would propose, would be the items that I mentioned in the memo at the back of the packet, which is, so going through them.
Can I put it over there and see if you can click it with the remote?
Sure. Okay. No, because I need to, no, it's not just clicking. I have others. Yeah, that's not going to work. Yeah. So if you kind of look at the memo, the things I want to cover are, you know, talk about the retail uses and how we're combining all those. It's something we talked about, the personal service uses, some of the other details of that, like barber shops and brew pubs and other uses. Accessory farm structures, and then if we, and I think we could spend quite a bit of time, guest buildings. I'd like to come away with today with some discussion on guest buildings. It's something that continues to come up, which is allowing guest buildings without the restrictions for being family members or non-paying guests. And then I think we'll see how we get after that point, and that's without getting into going through the definitions line by line. Like I said, I think we already have a bunch more corrections and consistency verbiage proposed for definitions, so if we, I'm happy to take any comments you get or any written comments, so we can come back next time and go through that in more detail. So, Mr. Chair, are you ready to, how would you like me to proceed?
Before we proceed, I'd like for the record to show that Commissioner Preston is also present now.
And I understand Paul's going to try to get online here shortly, so we'll see him up there when he's online.
Okay, yes, sir.
Commissioner Doris, any questions on, yeah?
Just not on what you said, but just to bring it back to what you were talking about, just either now or before we get out of here, can you tell us what you're going to tell her? Because I'm curious about opening up or the outdoor stuff too and what that means, or it doesn't seem like something we would just do here today, but.
I suspect there's interest in maybe setting up tables on the public right-of-way or in parking areas, and so I have to better understand what the request is, and then it's not really the Planning Commission's decision. It's going to go to Public Works if we're talking about the public right-of-way, and if it's in a parking area, I think we'll probably be looking at some type of temporary use that the Community Development Director has the authority to handle. So I don't believe anything will come back to this commission.
Yeah, it didn't sound like it. It just sounded like a good idea, to be honest with you, so wanted to better wrap my head around it. Thanks.
Yeah. Just to add to that issue on that topic too, we've been working with the businesses. I'm not sure who that is and what business that is exactly and what we need to do, but obviously, in terms of everything with all the businesses and what they're doing, we've been, whether it's business license or planning and parking and everything, we've been working with everybody. So I think, I'm sure it's something we can help them with. You know, and to say there's a limit, I'm not sure even what the limit is on outdoor seating. I'm not sure anybody's ever told anybody they can't do outdoor seating, so it might just be a matter of talking to them and seeing what they need. Yeah.
Go ahead and proceed.
Okay, so let's talk about retail uses.
That's page 59 in our hymnal.
Starting on page 61, right? Residential uses start on 59. Retail uses start on 61. So if you remember kind of the goal, we have a lot of proposed deletions to uses, which does not mean we're not allowing those uses. It means that, you know, architects and engineering supplies are a retail use. We don't need to call out the type of thing that you're selling in all cases. So a lot of those things are being deleted in lieu of a definition that's just, if you're doing retail sales, here's where you can do it. Couple of exceptions to that. If there's uses that are more intense, like tire sales and installation, that's not like selling architect supplies in a store. There's more impacts with that. It's not permitted in as many districts, so that keeps its own definition and is not allowed in as many places as normal retail sales are. On the other side of that, maybe there are some retail type of uses, which I see there really aren't many, but there may be some that are permitted in residential office or general office that would also be called out separately. As far as the retail uses go, I really don't see that. The pharmacy's the exception, which is already in there, but there's some of that with the personal service uses. Also, there are retail sale uses like antiques, so right at the top of the list here, and I'm on that page on the screen right now, is, oh, I'm in the wrong, no, I'm not, I'm on the wrong page. I'm going to get to it. Yep. Thank you. Okay. And actually, for antiques, it's deleted on here, and I would suggest that I need to undelete it because we have uses that are, we have retail that are new merchandise, and then there's a lot of different definitions for various type of retail, of used goods that are allowed in different districts. We have antiques, there's a definition for that, and that's allowed where retail uses are. Collectibles under C is where retail uses are. And then we have what's called a secondhand dealer, which is defined, and it's a dealer of one good, like it's a dealer of used books only or used clothing only, and those are all retail uses. But they're defined differently because then you have the secondhand business or thrift store, where people go and drop things off, and that's a different type of use than a retail store. They're collecting everything and selling everything used, and those are not allowed everywhere that retail uses are, and pawn shops are not allowed everywhere retail uses are, so those are called out separately.
Do we have to define what an antique is if we put antiques back in there?
Well.
I don't think we did before.
I'm almost certain there's. Yeah, there's a definition, and I didn't delete it in definitions because I didn't mean to delete it in the use table.
Okay.
So there's, yeah, there's a definition for antiques.
And Chuck, by the way, that definition is 60 years or more, so you are an antique.
Yes. And Lee, we also have, you have secondhand business parentheses, thrift shop, and then you have thrift shop parentheses, secondhand business. Can't we combine those?
I would suggest thrift shop is the more common term, because I think the secondhand business at our code is the only place I've ever heard that term. Nobody calls it that, right? It's a thrift store.
A thrift store is fine.
So we'll make it a thrift store.
Because they have the same, we have the same requirements and everything else. It just seems like they ought to be the same.
Yep. Thrift store will be the term.
And since we're leaving antique, or since you're going to undelete antique, we're getting rid of, the parentheses are gone, we're just going to be thrift store, period? Is that right? Because, just to eliminate the confusion, or are you just going to leave it with secondhand business in parentheses?
No, delete the parentheses of secondhand business, right?
Got it, thank you.
And for the definition, that definition needs to move from secondhand business to be the definition of thrift store in T. That's what, that's what.
Copy that.
And finally, Lee, the brew pub is in here.
Yep.
And that's one of the things we want to try and define. I don't think it's defined. Is it, you know, it's not a restaurant, no drive-through, it's not a restaurant, drive-through, and it's not a bar.
It said 51% of the floor was restaurant or something.
Okay.
It was in there.
Let's talk about that since you brought it up.
All right.
It's on page nine at the very top. So brew pub currently is, well, for one thing, it's where they brew it, like the Union downtown. They have the brewery. The Fox has a brewery now. They have, but where more, but by definition, to be a brew pub, you also, and to do that, you have to have a restaurant that occupies 50% or more of the gross floor area. However, in looking at that, we don't allow them in as many places as we allow a bar. If you look at, go back to the use table and see that a bar is allowed in downtown mixed use and even in neighborhood business with a special use permit. Brew pub stops and is not allowed, and is not allowed, but, and maybe it shouldn't be, but, so it's a little bit different, so it has that extra brewing element to it, so that's probably the right location for it. Just to cut to the chase, I think we should eliminate the requirement to have a restaurant with a brew pub. It would seem like if you're going to have a brew pub and a bar, it's permitted, and in fact, we've had to use that definition, that determination in a certain case because it's really just a bar.
So would it still be 51% has to be dedicated to a bar as opposed to brewing, or just eliminate the whole sort of?
Well, so it's, yeah, so how would you?
And also, while we're on it, I'd like to suggest we can allow them in tourist commercial at least, right?
Right. I would add them to that, too, yes. You know, that's one, I was going to look up the definition, the brew pub and NRS, maybe to come up with a completely different one, because our definition doesn't really say what it is at all. It just says it's a business that contains a restaurant. It doesn't even say that you brew beer, and.
There's a lot of them that don't have a restaurant.
Yeah. And where they're, yeah, that whole definition, it needs to be fixed for what it is. Yeah, right. 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 We got around, we said it has sassafras on the same parcel, so we wiggled around that.
I like how you work with people, Lee. It's good.
And chapter, we're not even sure where the chapter reference of NRS came from, because that's not related to brew pubs at all. So brew pub is one we're going to look at, unless there's any specific suggestions, we're going to look at NRS and see what the definition of brew pub is, and our proposal is to eliminate the restaurant requirement from that. It's not a brewery. Brewery. Yeah, they need to serve it there. I mean, there's got to be a definition. A brew pub is a pub. It's not a brewery. There's a brewery and bottling facility, that's something else where you just brew beer and pack a little gin and bottle and put it out. So we'll work on that, but I think, is the general consensus that?
One thing we don't have here that we may end up with is a distillery.
Right.
And so, I mean, if we're going to be doing brewing and distillery, maybe those should be cohesive.
Right.
And then eliminate the bar.
But with, yeah.
Restaurant.
Right. But with a place where people go to buy that it hasn't, but it still should be the place where people go to sample and buy it and have the bar element to it. I think Bentley's the example now, that's the distillery, and has that on there.
It'd sort of be like a vineyard where they sell their product and do tastings, but it's not really a restaurant or anything.
Wine tasting. Yeah, maybe those could be combined. They're all similar, wine tasting, distillery.
Can we go ahead and let the record also show that Commissioner Eswin is present also? I'm sorry. Welcome. Good to see you in person.
Was going to be on my computer, but I went to turn it on, and nothing came up on either one of them. Yeah, just a black screen. I don't know, yeah.
Okay, one thing I also wanted to mention and bring up and discuss with the Planning Commission is the location of the neighborhood business zoning districts. For the purposes of this discussion about where retail uses should go, because as the code reads now with all these different types of retail uses, some are permitted in neighborhood business and some aren't. In some cases, that's intentional, but I think in a lot of cases, they're very similar retail type uses that should be allowed. And if they're not called out separately and shouldn't be there, they should just be allowed as a retail use in neighborhood business. If you do a retail use in neighborhood business, you can't have outside storage without a special use permit, so that's not an issue. You have to come to the Planning Commission. But I wanted to point, you know, and this is in your staff report, our neighborhood business zoning districts are definitely where they are next to residential uses. And if you look at the actual uses that are on these, I don't know if it's half, but there's a lot of the properties are already with residential uses, and in fact, there's one recently approved on this upper graphic here. That's on Little Lane there. Had this neighborhood business going down Little Lane with multifamily across the street, and you know, a master plan project was just approved there. So I've put this on the list of things with the master plan annual report to look at. There's some other areas, and you know, Chuck's mentioned.
The only thing that's on this particular one is the post office.
Post office, existing residential development, post office, and an approved residential project there.
Right.
There's some offices here, and then there's.
Is there a daycare center still there, or did that go away?
Which one are we looking at? This one?
Off the post office, just south of the post office.
No, that's all residential.
But wasn't one of those houses the? The Nevada buildings people had that wanted to make a? It just seems like there really is.
That was in the residential zone. Oh, there might be NB. Yeah, I think you're right. There's a little notch in there, so this was.
That one little subdivision where the townhouses are, the front part, the NB-P.
Yeah.
Is townhouses.
Yeah.
And then across the street, there's just one or two little houses.
There was one house that had the NB.
Yeah, and that's the one that they wanted to put the daycare center in.
What are they doing with that?
Where those townhouses were, or are, not were. That was part of a PUD, and it was originally planned to have some commercial there along the street frontage, and then they came in and revised the PUD to eliminate that. Or, no, the owners of the condos where the houses bought the piece of property and just are not going to do anything, but I suppose it's still zone NB, so they could conceivably do something with it if they wanted to.
Yep. Yep. And the point of the graphics is just to show that these are located in close proximity to residential neighborhoods, so therefore, you kind of need to consider what types of retail uses that you would want to allow there. So now let me get back to my retail uses table. And I think, so the question is, if you're comfortable, as I have proposed here, is that retail sales would be permitted in the neighborhood business zoning district? Because if you go and look through, you have things like pharmacies that are already permitted there, pet shops, retail perfumery, other uses that we are going to delete. But is there a comfort level in allowing retail sales in the neighborhood business zoning? zoning district?
I had, uh, just while we're on that, I mean, personally, I'm comfortable, but also, you know, collectible store, I realized, has the same, you know, if all these, assuming all the proposed changes go through, you were proposing the same zoning for collectible stores as retail stores, so I wanted to say we should probably just combine those, because a collectible store seems pretty retail, too.
Well, so that, I continue to leave collectible stores separate because retail is not just a sale of, to distinguish it from a thrift store. Let me think about that before I...
Think about that.
So I'm keeping those, like with, like with antique, to, I'm keeping those definitions that you can sell antiques and you can sell collectibles because those are, because those are things we wanna allow everywhere retail is, but we don't wanna have a thrift store.
Understood.
Yeah.
But, so then, just think about it, but then on that same tier, too, what is the difference, what's a secondhand dealer?
We could, we could, no, I, and we could include antiques, I, that's the way to do it, is include those types of uses in the definition of, of retail, and everything's retail.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then, should we, what's a secondhand dealer, just out of curiosity? It's probably in definition.
It isn't a definition, but it's like a, it's the seller of a single commodity, a single type of commodity, like a used bookstore.
Got it, understood, understood.
So Lee, in talking about the neighborhood business district, you have restaurants with no drive-through permitted with a special use permit, um, and then with, with no alcohol sales, but bars are allowed in, with a special use permit with no restriction on whether they can sell alcohol or not. So I'm, I'm wondering if you should, I mean, it doesn't make sense to have a restaurant, a sit-down restaurant where you can't serve beer or wine. It's on page sixty-two.
Yep, no, and that, and there's no change proposed right now, that's what the current code says, right? Yeah. And if there's a special use permit, why not eliminate the restriction of alcohol sales and make that part of that?
Especially if you're gonna allow bars.
Especially if you allow a bar, especially use permit, right. Any discussion on that before I would make that change for the next? So right, oh, yeah, to clarify, so right now, a restaurant is, is permitted in the neighborhood business zoning dist, well, wait, let me see that again. Yeah, a rest, but there's a footnote. So a restaurant is a conditional use in the neighborhood business district, but there's a caveat to that in the current code that says there's no alcohol sales allowed. But yet, you can get a special use permit for a bar, which, which is nothing but alcohol sales. So, yeah, we should eliminate, take that out, yeah. And they probably, and one could today get a special use permit for a restaurant and get a special use permit for a bar to do that, but that's, removing the restrict, removing the footnote restriction is the way to go. Any, any disagreement with that for discussion?
I had one more.
If you look at the areas you could put a bar and a restaurant in the neighborhood business zones, there isn't any, per se. If you look at the five zones that are zoned neighborhood business.
Well, yeah, no, there's some vacant, there's some vacant.
Yeah, realistically, on the map, you would have, you'd, you'd be really pressed to be able to do that and have the parking.
Yeah, there's, there's some vacant pieces, and you, you could, you could do it. And I think the point of the special use, a, a conditional use is, if you're gonna have that, then you can have conditions about limiting the hours and things like that, that minimize the noise impacts to next-door neighbors.
I had one more thing I noticed in going through this. It, they're zoned differently, but I don't know why and why we couldn't combine them all, um, automobile, retail, new or used, motorcycle sales, service and accessories, and recreational vehicle and trailer sales. They all seem, and thinking about it, they're all in different parts of the city, kinda. Michael's is now right next to a couple dealerships, but why not? I mean, it just seems like that should all be similar usage.
Would the other ones, RVs and motorcycles are also?
RVs and trailers was one, motorcycle sales is a separate one, both of those are on sixty-two, and then automobile retail on the first page, sixty-one. They're, like I said, they're currently zoned differently, they're not all even marked out the same, but I don't know why they wouldn't be or shouldn't be.
No, they're on here, they're the same.
They are, yeah, they are, this auto and motorcycle are, but...
Oh, you mean they're zoned out the same?
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 okay, I was more looking at motorcycle and trailers, because they were on the same page.
And RV and trailers are basically the same, except they're included in the tourist commercial, which is something I think we need to do with all of them, is to add, add them to that.
Add them and combine them.
Yeah, okay.
I lied, I got one more. Personally, and I, I kinda see, but I always wanna put it up for discussion, with the building materials and carpet and floor coverings. I mean, I get on one hand, you don't wanna fill up, like, downtown mixed-use, per se, with a Meeks or something, but on the other hand, why not? If people go there and it's able to sustain business, why not? So I don't know why those aren't put, I'm not suggesting anything, but more up for discussion, why building materials, indoor only, that's, that's a key there, you don't want a lumberyard somewhere, but carpet and floor coverings and building materials also seems retail to me.
And you would like to see it where?
Well, I don't know why they're not...
Them?
No, why they're not just included in retail with all the other stuff that we're kinda lumping into retail.
I see.
Why those, the indoor only specifically, I mean, it's, it's categorized, why that is considered different. If there was a yard, I'd totally understand, you know, or, I don't know.
So before talking about downtown, I think that's, that's what, so building materials, I think, is one of those in neighborhood business that's not normal retail, because if you, if it's building materials, and even though it's indoor, they gotta be loading those things, um, we actually get a lot of complaints about the where, you know, the, the loading section of those types of uses, they're running forklifts and things like, they have to be, because it's large materials, they're running forklifts and things that have different impacts. So that's, I think that's the reason...
That makes sense.
That's the reason it's not neighborhood, that's the reason it's not neighborhood business, and then for downtown mixed-use, um, I mean, it's, it's, it's a good point for discussion, I, you know...
I just, you threw that out there, like, you know, I don't care where it is.
Yeah, in theory, in the downtown mixed-use, you're trying to find uses that create more of the pedestrian that are, where, where you can get out and go see to different stores and do it versus have to bring your truck to load up.
I, no, fully understood, I wasn't advocating downtown mixed-use specifically, I was just saying, I understand why you might not want it there, but anyways, it just kinda struck me, but the four, I didn't really think about the loading, and you're gonna have, even if you don't have a yard, you'll have a lot of accessory noise, that makes sense.
Okay, I don't think I have any other specific things to point out in the list of retail, retail uses. And I assume since I haven't heard anything, nobody's said anything yet, I, I know we discussed this, of breaking these uses out separately in the tables, retail uses, look it up here, personal services uses here, industrial, et cetera. Did that seem to make sense generally to everybody, how this is broken out? Okay. Great. Any other questions on retail uses table?
Anybody else? We're gonna go to personal services now?
Personal services. So there's somewhat the same issue with, um, personal services and adding them to the neighborhood business district, because like with, and actually, actually, this is more so in the personal services than it is with retail. There's a lot of uses that are permitted and then just some, some that aren't, but for not really any, um, parent distinction in the type, in the type of use, frankly.
Why, why can we not include television repair store with appliance repair? Oh, 'cause not many people repair their TVs anymore, they just throw them away, get a new one.
Still that shop over by, uh, on California or whatever, I noticed.
Yeah, but it, I, I think this is a bygone era thing. We don't have television repair services anymore, and if they do, they're in appliance repair.
So appliance repair is the first one.
Yep.
And it start, well, and, and it starts, you're not allowed to do that till general commercial, whereas TV, TV repair was in retail commercial.
Well, I think appliance repair ought to be in retail commercial also. Like the, over there where, uh, down Highway fifty where the ninety-nine cent store is, there's a Kirby, there's a vacuum cleaner place, that's an appliance repair store to me, and it should be allowed to be there. So it would seem like those kinds of places fit in, in the retail commercial zone.
Right, okay, and television repair can be stricken, there's not even a definition for it, and we all know what it, right? They don't repair them, they throw them away now, right?
What about diaper service and, um, mail order houses?
I don't know anything.
Does anybody remember diaper services?
Do they, do they exist anymore?
Yeah, they do, it's a green thing.
I mean, I've heard of the cloth diapers, but no, I haven't heard of any services.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, oh, my son, my son swears by them.
You wanna serve it, yes.
Lee, what does it do with barber shop and beauty shop?
Yeah, so it's, let's start, yeah, staying on that page, the first page of personal services on sixty-three, barber shop and beauty shop. So this, this is one that's in my memo, and I think, you know, again, warrants some discussion. We've had, we've had a lot of requests to, to go into residential office with either of these uses over the years, and, and the first, well, the first thing I should point out is, beauty shop and barber shop really would have very similar impacts, but right now, a beauty shop is permit, is a, is a conditional use in general office, and a barber shop is not, so probably one thing, the first thing to do is probably make those consistent at least, and you would at least allow a barber shop as a conditional use similarly. The residential office district has, if you kinda go through and look at some of the other, that's where there's medical clinics in there, um, you know, massage theory, massage therapy and estheticians' labs, pharmacies are conditional use there, um, you know, there's, it's not a lot, it's, it's generally, and it's a mix of where people have houses and where there's offices, there's a lot of office, right, we got title companies and things like that are in our residential office district, so, um, what, what are your thoughts on allowing barber shops and beauty shops with a conditional use in residential office?
I think that they should be absolutely synonymous, and I think they could be fine in the residential office, because what's happening is on the downtown, because there's more and more people that are using it, and it's still become such a core, that they're moving out all the way to Division Street, Robinson, uh, you know, over on Washington, and there's a lot of houses that have been converted, and they're all on city sewer, they're all on city water, they do have some off-site parking, um, I don't see why those two shouldn't be synonymous, but I'm wondering why beauty shops are, are admissible in tourist commercial and barber shops are not. I don't understand that.
Well, I, I agree, I think beauty shops and barber shops ought to be synonymous, they ought to keep putting one line. They're, they're different government agencies that regulate them, but they essentially do the same thing. And, you know, I think we ought to be consistent with them.
And I can include, and if, you know, and it has some shade, there's some shading in here, so the shading, I have the shading on the personal service uses and retail uses that we're deleting because they're becoming retail uses, so I, I, I concur with you, why aren't personal services uses allowed in the tourist commercial zoning district? Because that's an area where we, we're starting to get the retail use, personal service uses, let's just allow, let's look at what, if that zoning's even appropriate where it is, but, um, yeah, so I would add the beauty shop and, and barber shop to tourist commercial, and that, and that's what I'm proposing for all these other combination of personal service uses, is that they be allowed in tourist commercial as well.
The other one that I'd like to go ahead and see in with the beauty shop, that the, um, the beauty shop, the barber shop, and we already have like the estheticians that are kinda out there, but now we have another category that every time I run into somebody like this, they're told it's a special use permit, and that is the eyelash people. So eyelash people are under cosmetology. The microblading people are under cosmetology, they're not tattoo artists, although they do the same type of a thing. Then you have the manicurists that are a whole other deal, but they all kinda need to, a lot of their licensing is concurrent.
I'd like to make a radical suggestion here. I think tattoo parlors and everything you just mentioned should all be on, under the same, beauty parlors, all of it. I, I know tattoo parlors are a little bit stricter in this town, but in my time here, we've seen one, I think, only, and it was the Rice Street one, it was pretty obvious everybody who showed up thought it should be allowed there, and like, the, the times of bad characters going to tattoo parlors, that thought process is kinda over. I think, I'd like to suggest all that stuff be lumped together into one, and I think it should be allowed everywhere, I don't, I, I don't see why not.
Before we move, before we move over to that thought, let me follow Terry's line, so est- esthetician has a new definition, so are those, are those things under that definition, or are they separate? Because I'm looking at that, so applying cosmetic or eyelash, eyelashes, so that's included, which makes it, which makes it permitted in residential office? Yeah. So on page seventeen, the big, big page number seventeen, EST. Yes, that's one thing that needed to be, yeah. Which is a beauty shop.
Yeah.
And we're permitting, so... So as it stands now, esthetician is, is permitted and not a conditional use in residential office, end up. So is the suggestion that barber shop and beauty shop should not be conditional, but should be just permitted? I, I don't have a problem with that from a planning standpoint, because that's not a typical, that's not a use that goes into the night typically. I mean, so thinking about, again, this neighborhood business and residential office where they're close by, you wanna choose uses that are typically during regular business hours, like offices and things like that, and I think that's pretty much true of, I, I do believe that's pretty much true of barber shops and beauty shops, so they fit into that same category where people make appointments during the day. Any, is there any, um, objection to making barber shops and beauty shops permitted rather than conditional?
I just think it all ought to be consistent.
Okay. For that, for those similar, because there's similar types of uses that people go in.
Yeah, for all three of those, that, you know, whatever we decide, it ought to be the same, and I don't have a problem with it.
I would add yoga studio, yeah, just, I just thought about that, that's one that comes up, but doesn't say, doesn't say yoga anywhere in the code, so. Now is, is a tattoo... Now is, is a tattoo.
Well, hold on. You said something. Tattoo parlors will schedule their stuff into the evening later, much later than hair studio usually will. So from a planning standpoint, as you put it, I, I, although I don't, from a fundamental philosophical standpoint, they're all the same to me. But if you're, it's a good point. You don't want people in a neighborhood business, you know, zone, doing tattoo appointments till 10 o'clock regardless of how nice of people they are. So that's, maybe they should remain separate. But I do think massage should be lumped in with the esthetician and the beauty. No, it's not. It's permitted.
Gotcha, okay.
But it should be, I think it should all be on the same line as well.
Okay.
So I withdraw my radical suggestion about the tattoo parlors being considered similar.
But I'm going to be the other way on something else. It's under an esthetician, you have facial cosmetic shading permanent. So I would think that would be like permanent makeup.
Yeah.
So that should have gone under that and it's kind of hanging out by itself.
What line is it on now?
It is, it is two lines underneath an esthetician.
The facial cosmetics shading.
Permanent.
Mm-hmm. Permanent.
Yep.
That would seem like it would fit under, oh, in fact, it's part of, doesn't it say that in the definition? Yeah. Well, just take, we'll just take that line out.
Sorry, am I, are you looking at, is it a use table? Yeah. I got esthetic. Oh, okay. Oh, but that facial cosmetic shading permanently is already in the definition of esthetician.
Yeah.
Okay. Yep. Anything else?
I've got one. I think information kiosks should just be allowed everywhere. I don't think we have a big problem with people arbitrarily putting up information kiosks unless they're kind of necessary. So I think they should be allowed everywhere. Or even if you want to like make some things, you know, special use permit, it does to, to only allow it in downtown mixed use, well, I don't, I mean, I'm not sure what the harm is if someone has a use for an information kiosk, even if it needs to get permitted.
Part of that thing where you're talking about the outdoor seating and that type of thing, so it makes ADA and all that, you'd still want that. You don't want somebody to just stick a kiosk in the middle of the sidewalk. It's, it's going to hamper the ADA.
Hence why maybe even if it's special use permit, but I don't know that, I mean, I don't know. If you want to put, if, if an information kiosk could be very useful in a residential office section or neighborhood business section for some reason, and you want to get it permitted and put it out there, why wouldn't you be able to? Why shouldn't you be able to?
So I see, I see that's only in downtown mixed use, which means that it was only added when that section of the code was written in mid, in like 2007. So I'm not sure why. And without it, without it, without a definition, we did, we used to have a dat- remember the downtown kiosk with the dome on it? So you have that type. You have just, you have just information, which is just basically signs. And then you have, you could have the kind where somebody sits in it and, and gives information to people, right?
Like a stand or something? Oh, does that qualify as kiosk?
But it's not defined, so I, I don't know.
Yeah, well.
Like, I don't know if this even needs to be, if, if that should just be deleted entirely because if.
Yeah, I, yeah. I, I, if we're not going to define it, let's get rid of it.
Yeah.
I agree with that.
And I didn't deal with it, so now you did.
It's like it never happened.
Mail order house. That was before Prime and eBay and everything else.
Is it like a, like a, like a private P.O. box?
No.
No, Charles, I just was, I was just asked for somebody that wanted to move one of these mail order houses to a large building I have. So it's still real.
What is it? What do they do there?
Like a fulfillment center.
So they're like a third, they're like.
A third party to other businesses, oh.
All right. What, why don't we call it a fulfillment center then?
I'll, I'll look up definitions for that.
Yeah.
I think anything we have in here, we should have a definition, so.
I was thinking it was like a post office express or one of those old buildings that used to be like a faux mail, you know, post office.
And we can get rid of massage therapy line too, if it's included in the other one.
You know, I under, so it just got me thinking, we're combining a lot of stuff. Now, think about this from the user's standpoint though. Like I, I do, I do massage. Would, would the massage therapist know to look in the definition of esthetician to find out that, that's permitted?
Actually, because it would be more like personal services, because your personal services are going to be your beauty salon, your, your barber shop, your esthetician, your eyelashes, your, all that, so.
Well.
Well, it would still need to be defined separately though.
But that's, but that's my argument for having it defined separately is because personal services aren't permitted in residential office, but a massage therapy office is.
But if you put like, beauty parlor, comma, barber shop, comma, massage therapist, it would, each one would still have to be defined in the definition separately, correct? Even if they're on the same line in this table? So moot point.
I don't know. Is it for a massage, what, what would a massage, how would a massage therapist say, I want to start a massage therapy business in Carson City? Is it, is it permitted? And they're going to go to this table and try to figure it out if it's permitted?
I can see your argument for that.
I, I'm just confused, I think.
I don't think, I don't, I don't necessarily equate beauty shop, barber shops with massages.
But if you go on the table and they're all on the same line, we're not saying remove the verbiage massage therapy.
No, but what, what Lee's saying is, who's, who's using the table?
Well, by that logic, every business has to be on a separate line. Well, so we can't, no, that's why I don't care.
To an extent, no, I, no, I agree to the, to the extent that a lot of uses are similar and should be permitted in the same places. Uh, it's a ba, but it's a balance. Is it a different use than a definite, a regular personal service use or? Yeah, we'll think, we'll think about that too. Thanks.
On the massage therapist, I see that it is not allowed in tourist commercial, but isn't the Hot Springs tourist commercial? And don't they have therapists out there?
Yeah, for tourist commer, yeah. For tour, I think we need to go, I need to go back through it and evaluate the tourist commercial and add, add those on a, a lot of these uses into that.
You're saying we can't make tourist commercial go away, huh?
Yeah, one of the things, so a, as I mentioned earlier, I don't know, my, the tourist commercial district itself is something we haven't dug into deep. We need, we need to go through and review that. There's uses, let me, we're talking, we've talked about tourist commercial quite a bit. So basically in 2002 or so, that this, this code that we have now was adopted and it's been amended. There've been some amendments since, but big rewrite entire citywide code got adopted in 2002. The owner of where the tourist commercial property is owned pretty much all of those properties and didn't want us to touch his tourist commercial zoning, even though, even though it is in a way very limiting actually in what you can, what you can do. And if you had a true tourist commercial and wanted to reserve some area for resorts and didn't want it to protect it from all other uses, that would be, that would be fine. But we just kind of said, fine, but, but, but your definition's a little bit different. It's like, I don't, I want, I don't want you to change it, touch it, but, fine, we're not going to change it. So there's all these, there's tourist commercial that just like got left the same, and then there was the rest of the code. But it's time to go look at the, all of those uses in general that have some definitions that are a little bit similar, but a little bit different. And that just needs to be cleaned up altogether. And I think tourist commercials, so I have neighborhood business, I think is something to look at with the master plan amendment. I mean, I think you, you brought that up, Mr. Chair. But also, and the tourist commercial is kind of the other location to see if there's something more appropriate. Or maybe that gets fixed with the update to the permitted uses, but we can eval, we can evaluate it with the master plan annual update. Anything else on, uh, personal service uses? Now, I'll move on to, on page 65 is office uses. And again, there was just a bunch of office uses that were listed on their own, like accounting and bookkeeping, but why isn't that an office? So, you know, again, I, I would propose a significant consolidation of the different types of offices. I mean, you still have a newspaper print office that has trucks and things, so that's not permitted everywhere. Mobile home sales, not permitted everywhere. Uh, communicate, the, the community regional commercial or office centers, there can be offices of 150,000 square feet or more. Obviously those, there's not even a property in, in this residential office or neighborhood business district that has property that big. But, um, so large consolidation of different types of off, office uses there. And then moving down to restaurant and food service as recommended, we, was pointed out at the last workshop, there's a lot of different types of food service and beverage services that we would just combine into restaurant in either with a drive-through and a restaurant without a drive-through.
I have a quick question. What, I tried to look in the definitions, I couldn't find it here on the computer. What is an office limited contact with general public? That's allowed in the AIP and GIA.
The intent of that, so I, I, I know the intent of that. And, and that's what it says now. It's not a definition. But I mean, it's literally, it's an office and you have limited contact. I don't know what the determination is to determine that it's limited contact. The intent is that there's this airport industrial park area north of the, north of the airport. The property owners and businesses there want to keep that as an industrial area that does not have uses that encourage the public to go in there. Doesn't want retail, so there's no retail uses permitted in there. And other, you know, you know, no schools, no things that, that bring people into that area. Same thing applied when the, in the general industrial airport area.
Wouldn't that be industrial? I mean.
Yeah, so I, I, that's what I'm saying. So the intent, that, that's the intent. I don't know the, the purpose of.
To be clear, I have no suggestions. I just didn't understand what that was.
Oh, there's no def, right. So I have a check there that there's a definition, but it's only a definition for office, not a definition with the parenthesis, right? That's, yeah.
I will mention that we have been enforcing it. We do have people who make inquiries about putting office in, say, the AIP. And so we have conversations with them, well, what, what's going to be the focus of this office? Is it going to have the public coming or is it just a spot for your business to conduct their work? And you're not having the public visit. And we're making sure it's not a place where they'll be entertaining the public on a daily basis.
But why wouldn't you allow that kind of use in, in like the general, in, in general industrial or the limited industrial?
Yeah, I guess to technically to fill out the table, you would allow it, you would put Ps in all the other districts, right?
You wouldn't ask it in the other.
Yeah. Yeah, you wouldn't even ask it's an office, but.
But that would say that if you, if you were, if you wanted to have a office business that had limited contact, that you couldn't have it in those other districts.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's like, I had a neighborhood business where I had like one visitor a day. And that was a limited contact office. I had, I had an employee.
If you wanted an office with limited contact, you could put an office, wouldn't you just rent a place in an industrial zone? Do we need a special zone? Like, is it, I mean, maybe it is that prolific. Maybe there are that many businesses that require this. It just seems sort of nichey to have the whole, a whole line where it's like.
I think it's the opposite. I think the zoning districts that are out there don't want the public. It's not the other way around. Yeah. It's not the other way around.
Wasn't it when they put the airport in there, wasn't it part of the federal thing and part of the deal to bring in industrial businesses rather than offices? And I think the other thing is, is honestly, that area out there is not conducive to offices because the internet sucks. You can't get any internet out there. You don't have good, you know, hookups for anything, for any kind of a real office. I know like at the Technology Way buildings, they actually had to bring in repeaters that they have on McClellan, Duck Hill, Stewart. And then they had to bring in all these Gigumon and all this other stuff in order to even get IT out there. The same with Harley. And those are the totally two big offices I'm aware of in that area. That's a horrible place.
Don't we need to also remove the caveat on restaurant, no drive-through? Oh, I thought we were, like, we had moved on. Oh, we went back.
I complicated the whole thing.
Lee, I think it's okay the way it is. I just think we need to define what limited contact is somehow, if we can.
And add it like.
And then just make that as part of the definition.
Agreed.
Then, then, then we solve the problem, I think.
Yeah, we need to state the intent. I've said, I've said it, but we need to somehow. All right, well, I would, yeah, at least through the commercial uses here, lodging and. All right, any question? Well, restaurant. I think everything, I think this goes back to, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll delete the reference to no alcohol sales there, here as well, but.
Plus, plus we need to put a brew pub in here, I think, or something.
Oh, brew pub?
Yeah.
Brew pub and bar?
Restaurant and food, sorry. It depends on how we define brew pub now, whether it's food service or not.
Like a bar can serve food, so.
Yeah. And Mr. Tingle, did you have, you had a question? Okay.
Why are there two? Why are they in retail uses and another section for restaurant food service uses? Especially given that we are deleting everything except the only two that are also in retail uses.
So down to, yeah, I mean, I separated it out for the purpose of this discussion, at least.
Oh, that's it?
At least. I mean, should, should restaurants go in retail and just be, then we don't need a food service, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Actually, I could delete, so, so everything gets deleted there because it's already in the retail, the appropriate ones, yeah. See re, see. I'll move those, yeah, for the purpose of showing those being deleted, I'll move them in retail. And, you know, as was suggested at the beginning too, for the next round, we'll have the markups. Cause I, you know, you need the markups to be able to have this discussion, but we'll show you what it looks like with all of those things deleted and we'll, basically a clean version for next time. Do we have any, any comments on lodging use? We have several different types of lodging, oh, lodging and residential uses, I combined into one table. So there's different types of lodging and that are defined, bed and breakfast in. And you can have bed and breakfast in the his, in the residential office if it's in the historic district, some details like that. Campgrounds, I think, um, campgrounds are one of those that's only in tourist commercial. And I think we need to.
That's not necessarily so.
Yeah, I think we need to find, it's not allowed in agriculture or conservation reserve or other. It's allowed in, uh, about public. or other, it's allowed in, about public. It's at this point in the tables that I pretty much have only made any changes that were suggested by the planning commission, and we still need to go through details, and I think there's still a lot of inconsistencies, most, for the most part, from this point forward, that we still need to go through.
It doesn't look like we're handling residential motels either, like all those down Carson Street. Yeah, but there's a difference between a motel and a residential motel. Yeah.
On page sixty-five, the last item there, hotel residents, couldn't you just say hotel motel with residents?
Yeah, that would work.
It's still the hundred-eighty-day thing, though. Yeah, I'm not sure, so, that's one, hotel or motel residents, which are hotels and motels? Well, they're not exactly the same, because... So, the residence hotel is up to a hundred-eighty days, so, that really, that's kind of the extended stay RV park situation, but not, that's not the North Carson Street monthly rental motels, which are, which just are able to rent out motel rooms for more than twenty-eight days because they're legal nonconforming, because they're so old, they're grandfathered in to be able to do that.
Yeah, and if they go over twenty-eight days, they don't have to pay hotel motel tax, so...
Yeah, that issue is a discussion that the Board of Supervisors is having separately, so I think there may be some movement on what we do about definitions for that and regulations on the length of stay, or transient lodging tax through other sections of the code, but I don't, I don't want to try to spend the time to tackle that, because that's something that's on the board's list, and they're going to, they're going to be having that discussion.
Have we defined the difference between a campground and a recreational vehicle park?
I think, well, yeah, they are defined differently.
Remember talking about that at the, for that other one? Let's see, in the campground, the last sentence of the definition says, "See also recreational vehicle park." Oops.
I'm not sure what to do with campgrounds at this point, actually, because I'm really looking at, they're not listed in public districts or anything, but they, or any other public property, or, you know, in the mountains, or Forest Service, or anything, so, yeah, per se, there's no public...
Just in case with the property owner and that one piece of property wants to put K.O.A. out there, then he can do that. I just think we ought to make it go away. Yeah.
Lee, I thought there was some consideration on some of the open space to possibly have some campgrounds, I know that's gone back and forth a couple of times, so that would be on city-owned property, not privately.
Yeah, it would be on public, one of the public zoning districts. Like I said, looking in there, I don't see campground specifically listed, but maybe it's hidden in a definition or somewhere, so I'll highlight campground and try to dig in and see where...
Yeah, if the city put a campground in, that would be, this wouldn't apply anyway.
Or any other public land, state parks, or...
State park, whatever.
But I got to make sure, yeah, I'll go look and make sure that it is in there. And in tourist commercial, I think the campground's, yeah, it's, well, it could be, maybe it's not an RV park, I mean, I think it's in there, as it's in there, campground could be tents and other things versus an RV park. Yeah, again, something we haven't gotten into too much detail, so we'll look at that a little more closely.
And we have resort also, I don't know what a resort is. Is it? I just looked.
It's thirty-five up the bottom.
Thirty-five?
Yeah.
Towards the bottom, that page.
For the record, recreational vehicle park does say the term shall be synonymous with the term campground.
But it's still permitted in different areas.
So, it's probably just because there's verbiage to both ends, different places, so they both have to be defined, but they're the same.
Are you saying that they should be merged together or discreetly?
I have no opinion. I bet they have to be discreetly separated, because from a legal standpoint, they're, either that or you probably have to go back through and make it all one word throughout the whole Title XV or whatever, but I don't know.
Right now, the definition calls over too much. I agree with you, they should be discreetly different.
I'm not sure you could put the definition of a resort in that property that's zone TC with a permit, I just, you know, you guys...
That's what we couldn't touch, though.
I know, I know, I know.
Yeah, a resort, really, I mean, a resort, it's a collection of uses that would be, it's a hotel, and it's the recreation uses.
Probably be a P.U.D. by the time they got done with it, if they were smart.
I'll circle resort as well, too. Would we, yeah, you know...
How much farther do you want to go? You about done?
Well, oh, you know, I want, uses, going back, oh, I see on my notes here, I skipped one, drugstore and pharmacy was something we brought up, and I, my solution was to delete drugstore, because a pharmacy is the pharmacy sales with limited stuff, the rest of the drugstore is retail, is retail sales, so I think that's taken care of.
And I noticed you did that.
Okay, you're good with that. So, where, yeah, where should we go from here? So, a couple of things, I think it's up to you, you know, the only other thing I for sure, well, the only other thing I suggested we talk about today is guest building, so we can draft something to come back for that, and that's in the, that's back in the residential uses, it basically has to do with where they're permitted, but where they're permitted, I mean, this goes to discussion for future sections, which is where, you know, what are the standards for them and everything are in other sections, but the definition is where it says, the definition is one of the places it says where you, it's for family members and guests only. So, yes, where we're going, we can continue going through these tables and see if anybody has comments through these used tables, or kind of take a, take an aside now and go back to guest building and talk about that or something else, though, that's kind of up to you.
I think we got through the tables about as far as we got, we're just going to be on virgin ground if we keep moving forward, I think, and I would, it's twenty after, I would like to discuss a little bit, I think, about residential guest houses and things, so we've got some, at least we've got some ideas about where we're going with that, unless there's some objections from anybody else or suggestions.
So, are we trying to differentiate between the accessory structure versus guest building?
So, I think one of the options, so, getting into the discussion, guest building is currently, is that the right term? It is the term we use currently, right? Guest building is the term that Carson City municipal code uses for what others might call an accessory dwelling or other type of guest house, but I think the guest building is an intentional term that's used now because it's always been defined, it's because it's never been permitted in Carson City to have a secondary guest unit that is an accessory unit that's rented out to another family. It's always, it's always been limited to non-paying guests, it's supposed to be for visitors or family members, you know, might be for caretakers, for, you know, we're taking care of a parent, or vice versa, but it's always been limited to that, and so, there's been discussion ever since the master plan, going back in 2006, to remove that restriction to allow more affordable housing options, allow people to rent their guest houses, which I think, you know, if we went that direction, I think these should be called accessory dwellings then, I mean, I think we would just change the term, they would be called accessory dwellings if there wasn't a limitation on it being limited for guests and family members. Obviously, this is, this can be fairly controversial issue in itself, this is not, this isn't simple, I mean, it's, it is a way to, if you allow rentals, it's a way for, you know, maybe a, maybe an elderly fam, a couple can have a caretaker that rents the place and takes care of them, or supplemental income, but to neighbors, too, it's also can be the fear of having another family and increasing the number of families that you have in a neighborhood, and the impacts of that. In Reno, they went through the process of writing a code to allow accessory dwellings and allow them to be rented, and the result is that didn't pass, so they're still not allowed in the city of Reno, is the last I heard, it's so, because it became a very controversial neighborhood issue of, you know, allowing people to rent places. On the other hand, what we do now is allow guest buildings that are for family members and non-paying guests only, and do we know how they're using them? It's very difficult to enforce that type of regulation, I mean, it gets put on a...
Well, it's really sort of an arbitrary distinction, too, you know, people are people, and if, depending, it doesn't make any difference whether you're a family member or somebody who's renting it out, if you're living there, you're using that piece of property.
And that's the idea of having the size limits, is you're limiting what the impacts, you're attempting to limit the impacts of what an accessory dwelling unit is going to be by the size, you have size limitations relative to the main residence, and require them to have a parking space and things like that to minimize the impacts. So, yeah, I mean, I was kind of telling you some things on both sides, and, you know, I think you should have some discussion about where you, where you might want to have us draft something to bring back to you for next time, and...
When we, correct me if I'm wrong, but I seem to remember when we discussed this last time, I brought up Airbnb and, like, if there was any sort of ordinance against that, you know, temporary vacation rentals, and I think I remembered someone saying that the board was taking that up, or something was going to be discussed, and I don't, I don't remember, so, if anyone remembers that, it'd be good, or what is our current city, you know, let's say this path, let's say we kind of move forward, we make it an accessory dwelling building, it doesn't need to be for non-paying guests or whatever, is there an ordinance to stop Airbnb or that sort of temporary vacation rental, or would people be free to do that?
Well, you know, I think they wouldn't be free to do that because that's a transient use, if they're not renting it out for a month, that's a transient use, but I also think the code, if we decide to have, to allow accessory dwellings to be rented, that should be included, we've had a little bit of discussion, are we, should we try to address Airbnb? It's not really a problem here, like it is in Lake Tahoe Basin, for example, residence is a residence versus, if you're renting, you know, you have all these definitions for those lodging things that are all, you're renting something, boarding house, you're renting it for transient use, you're those things, you're a boarding house, or you're something else, or a hotel, then you need to be zoned appropriately, that's not in residential, but I think if we go the direction of allowing them, an accessory dwelling, to be, removing the restriction on family members only, allow them to be rented, that should go along with something that states that it's on, not for rental on a transient basis.
I think it should be covered either way, whatever is decided, I think that should be obviously clearly spelled out.
Lee, I think the other thing that people are concerned about is that almost an infilling to a multifamily type of level, because, let's say I have a five-hundred-square-foot house, I can go ahead and do accessory building, accessory building with separate entrances, and I can say, I've had it, I leave, and I just rent the place, and I have multiple rentals on a single-family lot where I'm not even an owner anymore, and there's nobody that's responsible, that's where the neighbors actually had more problems when they started doing it in Sparks, just because they were converting garages, they were converting all sorts of things, and the ownership just turned them into, hate to say this, actually, like little slum places, so, and that's where, that's, and I think that's why Reno actually has a hard time grasping it, because Sparks was a poster child.
I think that there's two, I think that's a major issue, I think one of the things we would have to consider if we're doing this is that the primary owner, the owner of the property is in residence in the primary dwelling, and the other thing is, and without trying to sound uppity about it, I think a six-thousand-square-foot lot is too small for another seven-hundred-foot apartment, I think it, and another parking place, I think it just really crowds the SF six zoning area, and you could, you know, then you do become a multifamily crunch, because there's, you're just trying to put so much on such a small lot that there's nothing left, and I just, I just think that asks for trouble in the long run.
I agree, but what if, if it's, if we handle the problem that Sparks kind of encountered, slumming it up, for lack of a better term, why do we, why do we have to ensure that the owner has to live there, too? If it's not crowded and it's not bad-looking, why do we care who lives in the residences?
Or someone where you keep it from slumming up.
Because we have limited enforcement, I mean, that's the bottom line.
Well, but they don't get approved, they don't get approved, they can't, they can't...
What I'm saying is, let's say they get approved, and you end up with some of these things, like right now, it's gotten better, but I've got the Silver Queen as a neighbor, you know, so, let's be real, because enforcement is an issue, and when you have one code enforcement person to try to take all that on, that's going to be a whole other, other thing. The other thing I wanted to bring up, too, is how can the city go ahead and actually allow for accessory buildings in a P.U.D.?
With a P.U.D., your use is dictated by your base zoning, so if your base zoning allows for accessory buildings, including accessory dwellings, unless the P.U.D. is allowed with a restriction on those, which it's rare that somebody would say, oh, and as part of our P.U.D., we want to eliminate any accessory buildings, including accessory dwellings, but the general answer is if your base zoning allows it, your P.U.D. allows it, unless the P.U.D. specifically calls out that's not allowed.
And they would typically have an HOA, so they may have their own, and actually, with any of these discussions, this doesn't... with any of these discussions, this doesn't negate an, an HOA's ability to enforce their CCNRs that don't allow this stuff, whatever it is. So there may be, you know, there may be other
But the reality is, HOAs have less teeth than anybody right now. They've been so gutted.
No, it just, the guest building thing, I, I think it's a, it's a way of getting around the zoning code, is my sense of it. And unless it's a really big lot, I don't think it should be allowed. Because it, it then gets into a bunch of other conflicts, like, well, are you paying two sewer fees? Are you paying two water fees? They're not going to want to do that. And then, and then there's some state statute on this that I remember we dealt with when I worked for Water Resources with regards to the use of, of domestic wells, when people wanted to serve more than one single-family dwelling. And that was problematic. And it's, it's like every time there's this guest, the guest building thing, it becomes problematic. You see it a lot. I've seen it in, around universities and all people buy a house, and then they put a door on the bottom one, and they go through the zoning thing. And I know, it, I think it just creates problems. And frankly, I don't think that the neighbors, you know, in most cases, are going to want to see a single, you know, if they bought into this neighborhood, and they bought into a neighborhood where it's single-family dwellings, and the guy next door gets to put an extra dwelling on it and rent it, then it really defies what the zoning code was about in the first place. I think it should be eliminated, except maybe for five-acre lots or something like that, that are really big, and it has to be a family member. It's not going to alleviate a housing crunch, I don't believe. I don't know how everybody else. I think it's just going, like somebody said, I think it's just going to create, in some areas, slums. I mean, we, we saw it at a meeting here a couple of months ago, right? Where I think we went out and we looked at a guy that wanted to build a garage and realized he's got an accessory building and somebody's inhabiting, and he's probably renting it. You know, and there's probably a ton of those around. And you're right, there's not enough enforcement people to go around and chase that down. If we do this, it's going to open a door that's going to create lots of problems, I think, for us.
Well, if you allow it, then you don't have to worry about enforcement.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, I think we all agree that SF6 is too, would be too small. I mean, I don't know about all of us, but that, that seems too small in a 6,000 square foot lot to put an accessory dwelling. But I don't know that, I don't know that, number one, we cannot allow it because we don't have the enforcement. I think that kind of flies in the face of being able to utilize your own property if we decide, you know, five acres or one acre or something, big pieces of land can have it. I don't think we should say, well, you can't rent, you, you have to either live, be it live on it, or you can't do it, period, because we don't have the enforcement. That's not someone, that's not a property owner's problem, I don't think, personally. But to kind of go back to the homeowner living there or not living there, if, if they don't build the accessory building, they can move and rent the house. If we decide that a, once we put a threshold on it, one acre, five acres, whatever, here you can put an accessory dwelling building on it, we all of a sudden strip them of their right to rent their land. I think we should consider all those things together if we want to suggest putting accessory dwelling, or allowing them anywhere, decide what the threshold is. And at that point, I don't think we should have the right to decide who lives on the property. We just need to decide what property size is big enough and neighborhood type or zoning or whatever to allow it, if any. Maybe we decide, no, forget it, it's just too much. But it seems like, you know, we should just put a threshold on it where we allow it or don't allow it, and then people can do what they want with their land. It's a free country, you know, within the laws and zoning that we decide and put forward.
I think, I think one thing too, Alex, is that, that what you're talking about, though, is right now, is we're not, we're not
Microphone.
Got it. There, what we're talking about is we're talking about opening a door that has not been there. So it's not actually a question of somebody not having the right to do this. They don't have it now.
Right.
So, but once you open up the door, then they have the right. But I have the right next door to say, God, I hate that. You know?
You do.
So, and when, and when I bought the house, that law was not that way. So that's what the change is, is that if you're going to change it unilaterally, that's, you know, that's opening up a can of worms. I really think so.
I'm not sure we can change it unilaterally. A change like this would have to, just like you said, Reno didn't pass it, a change like this would have to be voted upon, right? Yeah. So I mean, I hear you, which would allow time for public comment. Totally, agreed. And I'm not suggesting we just do it. You might be right, to the extent that maybe we shouldn't do it, once we dig into it, that it's just opening up too many dangerous doors. But I think if we do decide to do it, we shouldn't put a bunch of restrictions on, well, you can do it if and but, and blah, blah, blah. I think we should stick with a spirit of freedom, so to speak. We, we just decide where it's appropriate.
I frankly have, I find this conversation somewhat disingenuous regarding how I don't like the fact that this is going on over here because it impacts me. When we've gone through and we've approved a bunch of developments where the neighbors have come in and said, this is going to impact me negatively. And we have said, I'm sorry, that's too bad. We're going to improve it anyway. So I, like I said, I just find this a little bit interesting, the concerns being raised, given the fact that these are concerns we hear from public comment on everything. So that's just my two cents.
Well, I would, I would guess I agree with you, except that we're trying to write the rule. If we wrote the rule, then we would sit here and approve all those things. Right now, we're trying to decide if we'd really want to have it approved or not.
Well
No, and we have a process, we have a process now for, for accessory buildings. They're just not rentable. You can, you can build, you can build an accessory building on your property now, under certain criteria. You just can't rent it. Ms. Strassmann?
But you can have a family member live there indefinitely. I just don't see that it makes any, it makes any difference as to who's living there, or whether, whether they're paying rent or not. It's, it's, it's coverage of the land, it's a use of the land. It's not, it's not our job to decide who gets to use it.
And for the record, this is one commissioner's opinion only, but I think the outlook of, oh, man, if it's a family member, it's okay. But if this person's paying rent, it adds a little element of danger. I think that's sort of antiquated, and I don't think that a renter is dangerous to anybody. I don't think that, I mean, I just, I think that that's an antiquated outlook. So I, I think that, I'm, I, I agree with that personally. It shouldn't, it, we shouldn't have the distinction of who can live there. It should be a side, where they're allowed, period. Are they allowed on huge lots? Are they allowed on, I think, like I said, I don't think any of us think they should be on 6,000 square foot lots.
I do.
Okay. Well, see, I stopped myself last time, because you guys hadn't said anything yet.
I have, I have neighbors who have at least 12 people living in a single-family house. As, I know it for a fact, only has three bedrooms. You know, I'd just assume that they had a, an accessory building outside that, where they wouldn't be quite so crowded. Or, I don't think it, you know, it's, to me, that, you know, that, it's the number of cars that are involved. And it's not, it's not whether the house is too small or too big, or the property is too small or too big. It's can you accommodate all those uses on a piece of property? And if you can, you know, if you could build a second story on my house, I, you know, it wouldn't change the, the coverage of the lot. It would just allow me more room. And if I wanted to change that into a guest room, or a guest apartment, what, what's, why shouldn't I be able to do that on, on a 6,000 square foot lot, if you're going to allow it on larger lots?
Especially because the only feasible argument, aside from danger, would be a view, or something like that. And as the ex-chair used to say, we don't protect views. So I, I can get on board.
Well, but if you followed your scenario and you built an apartment on top of your house, then you, then you've constructed a multifamily home.
You just broke, you just broke the zoning code. Yeah, that, I
I'd have a duplex.
Yeah.
Yep.
I don't, a duplex is allowed in, in a single-family residential district.
Only, not, not everywhere in a single-family district. It's allowed
Wait, wait, before, is there a way to just make it so, I mean, regardless of
A corner lot in SF6 is where it's allowed.
Regardless of lot size or zoning or anything, I mean, could we make it so, or maybe this would be too much work, so anybody who wants to build an accessory building, it has to come through us anyways, that it has special use permit only? Is it going to be like that no matter what? I guess what I'm getting at is that way, we don't accidentally usurp the zoning code by someone saying, no, it's perm, it's permitted here, we can build it. That way, every, every accessory dwelling is looked at, to make sure that we're not breaking the zoning code.
But if it's up for a special use permit, they just keep coming through. And all their neighbors are going to come through.
I take it back.
I mean, I guess, I guess every, I kind of feel like my head's spinning. Everybody comes at this from a different, from a different angle. I, I guess, and correct me if I'm wrong, but, but when I look at this, I think, okay, I have a home in a development that I live in. And, and through a process here, somebody who has a home next to me could build a second guest building, which is like a second home, and therefore have two homes on, on land that was originally zoned for single-family dwellings. And, and I struggle with that, because that's like, well, why do we even have the zoning code then for single-family dwellings? This is a way of getting around it. And that's why we were dealing with, I remember with Water Resources, because it was exactly that. Everybody was trying to build something and only have to drill one well to avoid the cost. If it was going to happen, and, and it was an allowable thing, then I would think that the, the city then should be able to charge them double for sewer and two water hookups, too. Because otherwise, it's just, you know, you're subsidizing, those of us who are paying water fees for a single-family home are subsidizing those who are, are paying the same amount for two homes. I just think there's lots of problems in that.
Except for the base fee, which is not
Especially if everything's permitted. I fully agree.
And did we, and did we look at this in the development plan for how many sewer hookups? Because all of a sudden now, we're going to have more sewer hookups, more people on sewer, and, you know, it, all of a sudden, the whole planning foundation starts
Yeah, we're assuming that everybody's going to put an ADU in.
Well, I think if it's, I mean, in some, it's just, it's allowed in some of these. So are you saying, maybe I don't, maybe I don't understand, maybe, are you saying that it should always be a special use permit? It should be gone through and looked at before somebody's able to do it?
No, I think that, I, I'm, what I'm saying is that a guest unit doesn't have any physical difference than a, than a ADU. And if we're going to allow guest units, then we should just allow ADUs.
And isn't there a size requirement, like on these ADUs? I like that. Isn't there, it's like it can't exceed 50% or something of, so to your point, Commissioner Perry, it's, it's not like you can build, like I own a 1,900 square foot home on a third of an acre. I couldn't build, I don't even know if I feasibly could, but I couldn't go build another 1,900 square foot home and now have two. Your accessory dwelling is limited to a square, a percentage of the square footage size. So it's literally an ex, yeah, 50, right?
Well, and let's talk, you
And literally, at that point, you could build one too. You know, so it's all, it's fair. It's not like it's unfair. Your neighbor could build one, so could you.
Fourth to last page, wait, third to last page?
I fully agree about the meters, though, that you shouldn't be, if, if they're permitted, and you're, not only is your water metered, you should have to have another, you should pay, if you're renting it, you should have to pay so you're not being subsidized. I agree.
So actually, I have, what I have up on the screen there is from the memo that's at the very back of the page, page six and seven, of the memo that's at the back of your packet. These are the development standards related to guest buildings. So, you know, maybe part of the discussion is how, how large these are in relation to are they second, are they, do they become second dwelling units, or are they small accessory dwellings? Because the, the size limit now is 700, 700 square feet in these 6,000 and 12,000 zoning districts, and then 1,000 feet in all other zoning districts. Now, it's also limited up above that by a maximum of 50% of the, of the house area. But for the size of houses that we have in this area, they're probably, they're generally allowed to have that maximum size. So, you know, a 500 square foot small unit can have a family area kitchen and two, and two small bedrooms, and we're, and these are 7,000 feet and 1,000 feet. So maybe, perhaps, when we get to this point, maybe part of all of discussion, this does all need to be discussed together with these standards, even though we're not talking about this section of the code right now, because maybe they're, maybe those are too big for, based on, based on a discussion, I'm hearing that there'd be a comfortable, comfort level at a, at a smaller size of these things.
The, the other issue with this that bothers me a little bit is the mobile home districts. If I have a, if I have a motor home on a 6,000 square foot lot, can I put a 700 square foot mobile home behind it and rent it out?
I think there's a limitation there, says you can't.
There's a definition that says that mobile, mobile homes are excluded, they can't be used as accessory buildings.
Well, but we've got, the zoning acqui, allows for MH6 and MH12.
So you could build a stick, you could build a UVC stick-built accessory dwelling, yeah.
Accessory dwelling to a, to a mobile home.
Yeah.
In a mobile home. So, okay.
Next to it.
Next.
Obscure question, real quick. Off the airport, they've got all the, the manufactured homes and stuff, and you go in there, and I don't know how many people have really spent time in there. You probably don't know, there's little compounds. You go back and there's like one, and it looks like a normal house, and then there's four more behind it. Without, I don't care specifically if those are permitted, but is that legal? Could you, can I buy a la, a piece of land over there and go put three mobile homes on it right now?
No.
Without coming in front of us?
No, there's, there's a mix of properties in there. Some of those are actually technically old mobile, mobile home parks. Some may have more than one unit on it that have just had that before zoning was existed in that area. So, but, but the answer, I mean, the basic answer today is, I, I have a parcel, can I just go put two on it? The answer's no.
I don't know that we resolve the issue any more than
I think that one
Yeah, no, it's, yeah, as Hope said, it's
So this is what's there now, is what you're seeing. This is the code now.
I'll just weigh in on one really quick thing. We talked a couple meetings ago about agricultural buildings. And when we talked about those, I think what we talked about was, let's say Chuck has horses, and he builds a horse barn, and then he sells his house to me, and I don't have horses, and I want to store my car there. Is it still an agricultural building? He built it as an agricultural building, was subject to certain rules, but I don't have any, I don't want to do agriculture. I collect cars, so I'm going to put my cars there. Similarly, if Chuck decides he's going to have his parents stay on his property, and he builds a guest building for them, and I buy Chuck's house, and I don't have parents to stay in that guest building, does that mean I'm not allowed to occupy it? So that's why I think when you think about the tenure, similar to the agricultural building, it's good to think not just for the person who's building, but for that future property owner.
So let's go a different way. Okay. Let's say that I go ahead and I put in my 6,000 square foot garage. Awesome. And then I decide that I don't want to have the whole upper floor, I want to turn that into my loft accessory building. I can do that now, right? If we were able to do this, and if I limited it to 700 square feet? Because I've already met the setback rules. I've met everything else. I would just hopefully either, chances are, out of my 6,000 square foot garage that I've got right now is on one of these half-acre things, that I'm on a well and a septic. But I can just turn that in, right?
So, yeah, and the table, okay, it's very, it's pretty small on the screen there, but the, the table that goes across the top of the screen is the, for guest buildings in all the zoning districts, where it's permitted and by what process, with the A being accessory, which means it's permitted, if you have a residence, then you, then you just get the building permits to do it, subject to all the other requirements. And if it's an S, then it requires a special use permit. So in the, in the 6,000 and 12,000 resident, square foot residential zoning districts, it's a special use permit now, and it's permitted. So I assume it, you know, so somebody that has the big building, if they wanted to convert it to guest building, living space in accordance with all these other current regulations, that would just be a building permit today. And it would be, depending on the size of the house, up to 1,000 square feet.
I think we should leave that table pretty much exactly as it looks, and eliminate the requirement for family and, and anything, and make it so they can rent it. I mean, that table looked pretty reasonable in terms of still, if someone wants a 6,000 square foot, or, I mean, put an accessory building or, I mean, put an accessory building on a 6,000-square-foot, uh, SF6 property, they're still gonna have to come in front of us, and if it's completely unreasonable, then we'll probably say no. If it's reasonable, and then none of the neighbors write in, I mean, we'll probably say yes. And, but I don't, I think, that personally, I think that, that table should stay the same, and we should just eliminate the, the family and friends, or, you know, non-paying guests verbiage.
How many accessory buildings can I have?
If your lot's more than 21,000 square feet, you're limited to 5% of the lot area, or you need a special use permit. And the cumulative total of your accessory buildings cannot exceed 50% of the size of the primary residence without an administrative permit, which is a public hearing. If it's more than 75%, when you add up all your accessory buildings, it's a special use permit, subject review by planning commission.
Was your question, how many guest dwel, accessory dwellings? Well, I think the, the intent is one, so if that's not clear, yeah. Any other thoughts on the square s, size, size limitations? And, you know, and, and that, I'm not giving you a bunch of information to go by. I mean, I think there's obviously a lot of regulations across the country that al, that allow them and have different size regulations, so, I mean, you can compare them to others. Um, I think when we did that, when we adopted these size limitations of 700 square feet and 1,000 square feet, this is on, this is on the larger side, I think, of what is typical of accessory dwelling units. And I think part of that was because we still had the family and guest don't, limit, limitations in there. I could, you know, for, for next time, we discuss this and have, try to have more information on others and size limitations, and what's more typical. I think, I think smaller ones are more typical, don't you? Yeah? Yeah. Yeah, I mean, these are actually quite large. These, I mean, I, I understand the discussion that of, a, a concern that if you build a, yeah, 1,000 square feet, yeah, that's, that's a house.
Well, now, now that I've heard all sides of this, cuz this is kind of a new one for me, I'm for leaving it alone completely. I understand now why, why it was there, and where there are some. And really, the only difference there is whether or not it's for family members, or whether you can actually rent it out, which is what you're saying.
Right, right. What it, and, and I didn't talk about that in the discussion, but to leave it alone, it does allow the extended families that we have, so that the grandma can have her own place in the back, and there's, and there's caretakers. And, you know, that is certainly the intent now of.
But I, but I think at the point of what, where it's going to be rented out, there, then, then those costs that are associated with it, you know, the water, the sewer, and all, need to come into play, which.
Yeah, and I did wanna, I, yeah.
Cuz I, cuz I think otherwise, it's cheating.
Yeah, I didn't say, I need, I need to do some research with Public Works as to how they would treat, how they would treat a guest building now, with regards to water, sewer hookup, so I have that answer. And then, of course, what they would think if, if they were rented out a second unit.
If the accessory building has at least one bathroom, with 700 square foot, you could actually put in one and a half baths and a kitchen. So that gives you three, you know, quite a few fixtures right there. So my question is, is I think it really should have its own separate meter.
I don't, I don't know the answer to that, you know, today.
Well, and since, since it's revenue, if it was rented, and it's revenue generating, then, then the assessor should look at the property taxes on it, too, and assess it according to a higher value. I'm just, I'm just throwing these things out of the cog in the wheel of, of, if you allow this, if you allow them to be rented, there's a whole lot of stuff that needs to be looked at. And I think it's a bit problematic. Cuz if, if it is allowed to be rented, I think a lot of people will come in and wanna do these. Because, hey, if they can make money out of renting, building a building and renting it on their property, they will.
One of the things, this is real estate agent, we have people that say, do you have a mother-in-law's quarter, or a place I can put my kids that's on the same lot, that I don't have to deal with them? And so actually, they're, they, having it, you know, where it is actually family, is not a bad thing. It actually helps a lot, because of the fact that you do have a separate, um, area for the family. You know, it's just like in Dayton now, they actually have houses that have separate entrances for mother-in-law's quarters in the main house, and have it separate with kitchens and baths and suites, but it's all on one. So, no, and they're, and they sell like hotcakes, so.
Okay? Even if we leave the verbiage the same, why don't we just make it so they have to have their own meter moving forward? I mean, who cares if it's family mo, rented or not? We can all agree, I think, that, uh, if you're building an accessory dwelling, it should be metered by itself, separate of your, your property, or separate of your, your primary, uh, residence, sorry.
Yeah, I'm not sure they don't already do that. That's what I'm saying, it should.
Understood, I see what you're gonna look into, got it.
Okay, sir. Anything else?
If you, yeah, I, I sense we're kinda wrapping this up, getting close to five.
Time for a few comments?
Yeah. Yeah, my, so the plan is, yes, I, I will ta, I will take more comments. My plan is to take these comments that are received, make some changes, get them online, get the word out through the newspaper that they're available online, and wanna really start getting public comment, cuz I'd like, you know, I mean, the, really, the point of this whole review, too, is, we, we could, we could write the code and move, move on, but when it gets, when it comes to it, what the public says is gonna really factor in, and, and we need to start hearing from the public on this, so I'm gonna try to get some outreach for next time. But, and I'm happy, and, and then the other thing I wanna say, happy to take any comments now, and if you have written comments you wanna give me to incorporate and consider and talk to you about between now and then, just, just give me, give me those comments on any other section in this we're talking about. So that, yeah, thanks.
So if I could throw in a few, one, one, just in general one, when I, when I read through this, you've put an explanation for a lot of these changes, where you've crossed things out and, and said, see retail sales, gas sales as separate use, or something like that, right? There's quite a few of them that just say, not used. And it sort of left me with thinking, okay, did it just go away, or was it replaced by something? And I think when the public reads it, they might, you know, a, as well as the elected officials, they might wanna know, okay, so that went away, so what replaced it?
Okay.
With those, so just a general comment.
And what he's referring to specifically in the definitions, across out a definition, and then say, not used, but that is, that literally means the term is not seen anywhere else in, in Title 18, so.
So it's not used, it's not like it didn't go away, it just.
Right, this, but, but, but I will, you're right. You're right about that explanation, so that the general public, when they see it, knows what that means, and I'll.
Um, page 13, there's, there's a definition of construction, right? That says it means any grading of land installed improvements. I just questioned that, should that also say, means any demolition of existing structures and grading of land and so forth? Because then, a lot of construction requires tearing down something to build something new. Page 18, farmer's market has a definition there, and, and I just, knowing, knowing about our farmer's market here, the two things that are, that do happen down there that aren't in here are the sale of processed meats and food vendors, which aren't listed in there, may provide arts and crafts boost, so I don't know if that needs to be, but those, those two are at the farmer's market. Anybody else got one while I'm paging through?
Uh, yeah, what's a bowling court? Page 12, it's, it's commercial amusement and recreation, we have a ball in cages. It's batting cages, I believe. Uh, personal communication services that operate in the 1850 to 1990 megahertz range, that's a pager. Uh, number 30. We have pagers, any, anybody have a pager? Yeah, on page 25, it's underlined as investment casting. What's an investment casting?
I thought that was the term, so I added investment casting to the term under manufacturing, so, because that's, uh, in the limited, limited industrial area, um, we have metal casting is supposed to be a general industrial, but then. Investment casting, I thought that was the term I was given to add in there. I don't, I'll look. I think.
On page 68.
I'll check it.
Under.
Investment casting is an industrial process based on lost wax casting, one of the oldest known metal-forming techniques. Seems like you're on to it.
On, on page 68, under industrial uses, after ammunition manufacturing, an otherwise permitted use of facility, I don't know what that whole thing goes with. Does that go with ammunition manufacturing, or is it just superfluous?
Oh, where's the?
On page 68, underneath ammunition manufacturing.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I'm not sure what to do with that. I gotta figure out what to do with that. That's there because those uses.
It looks like a generous statement.
Those uses are prohibi, I need to come up with the term, cuz those uses are prohibited in those industrial districts that are next to the airport, is what that's trying to say, but.
Okay.
I'm not sure where that goes, and how to say that.
On page 69, crop dusting and equipment yard, can't they be in the airport industrial park?
Not. Not now. Um, so, yeah, the airport, so the airport industrial park, as the name implies, was intended to, to kinda try to preserve an air, you know, as, as I mentioned earlier, not retail, not, but also for, for manufacturing of aviation focus. It's not really used for, it is somewhat, I think, probably, but there's way more uses than aviation focus, so I think they just don't want to take up that with outside storage of things.
And, okay. Dry cleaning plant, aren't the dry cleaners in town do their own cleaning there on site?
Well, there's that plant on, uh, Fairview, I'll skip.
Okay. And the incineration of animals, is that, is that a pet crematorium?
If that's what you wanna call it, a pet. But it is, it's, yeah, inciner.
Whether you like your pet or not.
I don't know, where, where, you know what, I don't know where they do, where do they do the animal incineration?
I thought they do crematoriums at, at the regular crematoriums, at the funerals. If you take your pet in, they'll burn him up.
I think they have, but the vet's office.
The vet's office.
But they don't, I don't, do they actually do it there at the pet's office?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure they do.
Yeah.
That's a question I've never thought to ask.
Well, but you didn't say, the definition, the definition as it reads now is in incineration of animals and garbage.
Yeah.
So a garbage incinerator is something that's more of the industrial use, so maybe I shouldn't say animals.
Maybe we oughta say pet crematorium somewhere.
Well.
Or, or take animals out.
Or if it's.
And one, one other thing we were talking about, a machine shop.
Yeah.
Where it was located.
Yep.
Is a 3D printer company a machine shop? If I'm making things with a 3D printer, is that a machine shop?
It's fabrication.
Is it fabrication?
Yeah.
Wait, I thought we had this discussion, that they could actually go into my retail commercial.
Who?
3D printers, it only are about this big, they're making things like bands and little things like this, like they have at the library.
If they have.
The library's got a bunch of them.
Yeah, I think in retail commercial, if they're selling them and making them there at the same shop, that's.
No, if they're actually using them to make things, just like they do in a sign shop. You know, a sign shop makes banners.
Are they making things to sell there?
Yeah. No, 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 I'm saying that with the 3D printer, a lot of times, they are making things to sell. Like, right now, they're doing a lot of these masks and stuff like this. The, um, library has one. But it's really no different than a sign shop, that is actually putting out banners and signs and all these other things. So to put them, and put them only in a industrial area when they are, don't take that kind of floor space, I mean, this is not, this is not a typical industrial.
I don't think we're calling the machine, no, no, the machine shop is not supposed to be 3D printers, that's.
Let's exclude them, please.
But.
Well, let's take the pagers out and put the 3D printers in, and then. Does anybody else have any comments?
Yeah, I have a few, a few more that I found here. Page 33, number four, the definition of park trailer model, um, being a temporary dwelling unit containing its own wheels and designed for travel, recreation, or vacation use. Actually, most of these are in parks, so I just went and got a different definition from Wikipedia, which I think is a better one, because it does, it's not really on RV, it's something people put, they can move it, but they put it in a, you know, in a, uh, so, and then on, um.
Are you gonna give me those comments?
Yep, I got it right here.
Oh, okay.
I got it right here, I'll give it to you. On page 34, recycling collection center, means a facility used, I would add in one of those metals, just the, the word metals, empty beverage containers of aluminum glass, metals, paper, and clothing, cuz they do collect a lot of steel and metals at those facilities. And then on page 47, on the, under the definitions here, I'm gonna go to 1804045, single-family, two-acre, and, and my only question here is, at that bottom sentence, this, this, these districts are consistent with the policies of the suburban residential category of the master plan. And there's a few of these here, and when I go to the master plan, there is no suburban residential in the master plan.
Oh, good catch.
And, um.
Okay.
It, it probably should be the low density.
Right, right.
The way, the way I saw it there. And then the one underneath that, single-family, 6,000, districts are consistent with the policies of the low density, it should be the medium density, I think. And then 04080, there's one that says, with the policies of the mobile home residential category of the master plan, and there is no mobile home category of the master plan. And then, and then, uh, the only other one that I had here was page 67. Going down to, uh, under industrial uses, trailer rental or truck rental, and then two lines down, there's another one that says truck rental or trailer rental, and they're both the same, so I would think that we could merge those, probably. Thank you.
Mr. S. Swan?
This is probably a, a much longer discussion than, than what we need to have, but I was reading through this, and for mobile home parks and manufactured housing, there are all kinds of requirements for design and, and construction, and that don't apply to any other type of housing unit, and.
It's because it's all federally mandated.
Well, I, I don't think that we need to, the, the construction of the mo, of a manufactured house is, has to meet a certain, but we don't have to have site requirements for, for that, that are totally different than the site requirements for a, a, a single-family stick-built house. It is, um, well, let's see, where, I think it's, I write some notes here. It's, um. It's the whole mobile home park. And then, and then, um. I had, I had one section where I had made some comments about. Can't, now I can't find it.
Well, there's, so, it starts on page 47. At the top of page 48 is manufactured or mobile homes authorized. And then. No, there's some standards for older ones. So the, some, some of the sta-, I mean, I could talk to you about it, Paul, but I think, so some of the standards like in that, they have to be made in the last 15 years and then there's no standards. And if they're more than 15 years old, then there's some standards listed that you have to meet.
But I guess my question is, is we don't have the same standard, same, like, maintenance requirements for anybody other than mobile homes, you know? Why, or manufactured homes? Why, why is it different? You know, you could, I could, I could have a piece of property and just let it run down, but because it's a stick-built house, I don't have any maintenance requirements on it. But if I happen to have a manufactured house, it's gotta, it's gonna have these requirements to it.
It's gonna have those requirements when it's installed. Then you could let it go, fall down.
But I could build, I could build a crappy house and not have.
Well.
I mean, I, you still have to meet the building code requirements.
It's gotta be painted to start with. It's gotta be, have not cracked windows to start with or you're not gonna get a C of O. So which, so that's what these things are. I mean, if you, if you look at them.
But if you're, I guess, I guess.
Put the skirting on, not peeling paint, not cracked windows, not holes in the roof.
I'm not, I'm not disagreeing that we need to have standards. But I think that the standard should be across the board and.
Seems a little classist.
Yeah.
I find it, I find it fair because it's when it's installed. It's like when you build the house, we're not gonna let you have holes in the roof.
So are you saying that all the standards for stick builds are covered under like the building code?
Yeah.
So it's all fair, they're just not all equitable in the same.
Yeah, whereas we don't have any, yeah, yeah, we don't have any, we don't have those same, we, we can regulate by the building code. We can make sure the leak, the roof doesn't leak or you don't get a C of O. We can make sure, you know, not, your, the, the window's not open and big openings for, or you don't get a C of O. But for a manufactured home, it's placement, it's the electric, electrical, it's the connections going to it and that's it. We don't have any, so we're saying if they're older.
Cause the building.
They gotta be like.
Can the building department go into a manufactured home?
No.
There's a difference, there's a difference. The building department can't regulate the manufactured homes.
Manufactured homes are actually manufactured by the state, or regulated by the state. But they're also considered personal property because of the fact is they were not stick-built. And that's what they differentiate is, even when you put it on a foundation, it's still, when you sell it and convey it, you still have a serial number on it like you do with a boat or a VIN number on a car or anything like that. It continues to be personal property, not. It's, hey.
And if we're talking about the. If we're talking about the 15-year-old limitation, that's, I don't wanna say it's, I don't know, it, within the last 10 years that that was adopted. It wasn't, that wasn't always the case in the code, but that was a specific item that was brought in by, I forget who, who started, if it was the board or planning commission or what. But because the city was getting, oh, I remember. I think Shelley Aldean was involved in spearheading that when she was a supervisor. Because the city was getting, the other counties have the limitation, so we were getting all the old, old mobile homes. I think that's just the, so that's the background of it. If you, if you, if you, well, but if you, yeah, you said you couldn't find it. If you find something in there. And the other, the other place the design standards are may have been in when you're putting a mobile home in a single-family neighborhood. That's, that's the other place there are design standards. So anyway, if. Okay, yeah, it's designed, and that's the other place. And some of those design standards, and in fact, I think most of them that we have are the state law. It's just repeating what state law says. When the state said, we have to allow people to be able to put their manufactured home on any single-family lot, they said, the state law says, but it has to meet these certain requirements. So some of those mirror that. So if you, again, show me what it is and I'll kind of help see what is our discretionary stuff and what's just per state law. I'll talk to you later about it.
Lee, the other thing is, is any mobile homes that were built before 1976 cannot be financed at all. They all have to be a cash sale.
Okay. Anything else? Page 72, my last one. For agriculture and conservative conservation reserve districts, we have crop production. I'm thinking specifically of hemp. It's not allowed in the conservation reserve. That could be an oops or we could just leave it the hell alone. That's just.
And there's no definition of crop production, but. Uh, that's a good, yeah, no, that's.
There's a crop.
Which land?
Yep.
Oh, it was agriculture.
No, it's agriculture.
No, it's public. Wait, which land are we talking about?
The ones we, over by Carson River Road where they were trying to grow or whatever?
Where they were trying, where they were trying to grow is public. But there are other agricultural lands that they could go on, that's what it is.
All right. Any other comments? All right, the public is invited at this time to come in on and discuss any topic that is relevant to or within the authority of the planning commission, including any matter, any matter that is not specifically included on the agenda. Are there any other comments?
There is no public comment, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much.
I have one comment, question related to any agenda items. I saw a crew of contractors and various people at the Ormsby House. Thursday, I believe. Is there word of anything coming down the pipeline in regards to the Ormsby House?
Not down the pipeline, but we're having an internal meeting with the listing agents on Thursday just to share with them information we have as part of the city technical team. And. Exactly, there's new listing agents, Bruce Robertson, Sam, I can't think of his last name, who's with John Uhart.
It's Sam Douglas.
And John, and Bob Fredlin. The three are co-listing it. They recently co-listed and I talked to Bob and he, he thought it would be a good idea to just have this meeting so that we can hopefully get a successful buyer. But no, nothing specific.
Thanks.
Anything else? We're adjourned, thank you everybody.